Alrighty, good evening. I'm now going to call the meeting, this meeting to order of the Joint Committee of the City Council and School Committee. To my left is City Councilor, Ward 1 Gladys Lerbo Martinez, and School Committee Member, Ward 5 John Brunel, who is also the co-chair of this committee. To my right is Ward 4 School Committee Woman Irene Feliciano Sims, and Ward 1 School Committee Woman Mildred the Fave. We have a tight, a simple agenda, so happy holidays. Thank you all so much for being here. Thank you Chief, and we'll allow Doctors Reich a few minutes to get in with us. But I would like to begin if we could just quickly to, if I can accept a motion to table item number one please, because no one received an email with the minutes from Ryan, correct? So moved, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Motion has been made and approved to table item number one. Alright, I'd like to entertain a motion to, I guess we could take up items number 2, 3, 4 as a package if possible. Move, seconded. All those in favor taking up items number 2 through 4 as a package?
Aye.
Alright, okay. I'm gonna read them so that the public can hear at home. Item number 2, it was proposed by Councilor Roman, ordered that the school department provide a budget for how much money is being spent annually to pay for school resource officers for the district. Item number 3, ordered that the Chief of Police appear before the Joint Committee of the City Council and School Committee with statistics of all arrests made this year of Holyoke Public School students. Item number 4, also filed by Councilor Roman, ordered that the Holyoke Police Department appear before the Joint Committee of the School Committee and City Council, and provide job description, qualifications needed, and selection process for the school resource officers of the Holyoke Public Schools. Chief, if you would like to join us, and if anyone else from the department, you can come and have a seat. Yes, come on, we're a big happy family here, it's all information. And whenever Doctors Reich appears before us, we'll allow him to sit in on this discussion as well. Thank you so much Chief, I really appreciate you being here this evening. And again, I'd love for you to, again, just dive right in, tackle all of these items. I would like to let the public know for the record, Doctors Reich did email me the cost totals before this, which is $135,000 a year. So, just for the record, for my colleagues as well. So Chief, I'll open it up to you, allow you to present on the information that this committee's requested, and we'll have a discussion, so.
Okay, certainly. Thank you for having me in tonight. I also have School Resource Officer Mel Romero here with us, in case there's any school technical questions, so to speak, that are, that Mel handles every day. But anyways, so.
What, what school is Mel at, or you at Dean, okay?
So, your, the first question you have the answer for, I believe, the city pays, or the school department pays, $135,000 a year for the two SROs. Question number 2 was in reference to statistics for arrests made of Holyoke Public School students. The data I polled was this school's years, which really, September, August, whatever. And what I polled from was Dean, the high school, and Peck. If there was a, a, a school student that was arrested outside the school, I didn't poll that data. So this year we've made 18 arrests. 14 of them were at the high school, 3 of them were at Dean, 1 was at Peck. 3 of those 18 arrests were for felonies. And, again, I can't get into details of those cases, but, and when you look at the 5-year trends, as a whole, we make a little over 35 arrests per year between the schools.
Wait, any committee members, oh, okay, Mildred.
I'm sorry, can you say the numbers again? I can't, it was 14 in high school.
Sure, sure. Right, so we, no, no problem. We made 14 arrests in the high school.
14.
We made 3 arrests in Dean, we made 1 arrest in Peck.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, no worries.
And 3 were felonies, I think.
Correct.
Co-chair Brunel.
Just, can you, 3 of the 3 were felonies. Can you just give us, I have a couple of questions, but just give us what type of range those arrests?
Well, so, so 1 was carrying a prohibited defensive technology. And 2 others involved, again, I don't wanna get into it, just, it was certainly contact with another student that.
No, I don't mean the felonies, but I mean the whole, I mean a variety of like what they go from, from like, you're, you're explaining the felonies.
Right.
Okay, but what were the other, like 15?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, no, I'm sorry, certainly. Disturbing school assembly, disorderly conduct, resisting arrests, simple assault and battery, providing a false name.
And, and I don't pretend to know everything on there, and, and I hope I'm not jumping the gun on people saying this, but for some of the things like disturbing the peace or disrupting a, an assembly. Now I can understand if, for instance, perhaps an officer was, you know, trying to make an arrest, and a student or something tried to get involved in that, or whatever. But how is, how is disturbing an assembly an arrestable type offense? And, I'm just, I'm curious. How is that, how is that an arrestable type offense? Explain how, how the level goes from, and I understand there's points where, you know, if, and I don't mind if you want to, but like if I told, or a student told a teacher, which we have gotten in the past to F themselves, I'll use colorful language there, I guess, and, and/or a student told a officer the same type of thing. Is those type of things arrestable offenses?
Well, so, what I.
Or how does that?
So saying that to the teacher alone, more than likely not, because I gotta imagine teachers hear that.
Too much.
During the course of the year.
Yeah.
But if one of my officers is in a cafeteria setting where a lot of these.
Yeah.
Things happen, and there's a student screaming at the top of their lungs using some colorful language.
Yeah.
Yes, that is very arrestable. You could call that disorderly conduct, or if you wanted to give the student a break, you could call that disturbing a school assembly. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, Mel.
Alright, I can elaborate a little bit more.
Can you turn on your mic, please? Just push the button. Thank you.
You wish me to elaborate a little bit more, and you wanna know how, would it go from the kid telling the teacher F off to the officer being involved?
Right.
So, how I handle it, and other officers might handle it a little bit different. How we handle in this school, and I've handled it also when I was at Holyoke High School for about 3, 4 years, is that the students are there in the classroom, and the teachers are teaching. Teachers doing, giving a lesson. Teachers, the kids are there studying, doing their work, and the kid refuses to work, and he's either playing music with his cellphone, or being out loud swearing, and the teacher tells him to stop several times. And the teachers are instructed by principals that they have to go through a couple of levels before a principal is called. Principal is called, or a dean of student is called. They come up to the classroom, they try to remove the kid, or try to keep the kid in the classroom, either or, whatever works best for, for the student at that time. They go in, they try to handle the situation until they cannot no longer handle the problem that's going on, because the kid now, his level has risen up where he is not listening, he is not complying with any, any, anything. And it has to be removed, because you have 25, 30, 35 students that need, need to be taught by the teacher. Because, you know, the lesson plan, it has to go on. Can't stop the lesson plan just because one kid is disrupting the whole entire classroom. So when now the dean of student, or the principal cannot handle that, and the kid is refusing to leave, that's when the school resource officer is called.
So you're kind of almost, I mean although we're, I mean you're saying arresting, and maybe.
Well, it doesn't come to an arrest that easy.
Okay. That's, I guess I would, that's my thing is, is how does that like a note, like maybe he's, the person's trespassing on the premises at that point, or whatever.
What are we talking about?
How do we get to, how do we get to an arrest, I guess is my question.
Okay, I'm trying to explain it.
Okay, hold on a second, I'm sorry.
But now you're talking about trespassing, which is totally different.
No, I understand, how do we get to an arrest, I guess?
Okay, so now, I, I show up with the kid.
Yeah.
And I sit with the kid, and I go right up to him, and I talk to him. And a lot of these kids I know by name, you know, Junior, Jose, whatever his name is. You know, I kneel down, usually, I get to his level, you know, because that's what you have to do. And I, and I ask them politely, and you ask them several times. And I wanna say 75% of the time, it works. You get there, you know, and you talk to the kid, and the kid's having a bad day, he's just having a bad day. And 75% of the time, whatever I do, it works, or whatever other officers do, it does work. But this, sometimes it just doesn't, and the kid now just, his level rises up to where now he starts to throw desks, now he starts to throw books. Now he's, now I'm looking for the safety of the children. When he starts doing that, I tell him, and it's several times, you tell him to stop. He doesn't stop, and now the arrest has to happen, because he is not listening to principal, teachers, dean of student, and I, and not even listening to myself.
So, so in, as my quick review of the arrests that we've made so far this year, I don't see anything where a classroom disturbance in that language rose to the level. What I'm seeing is fights, people being punched, I'm seeing the vice president, I'm sorry, vice principal calling for assistance, because he can't, he or she can't handle it. And then the officer gets there, and the students are running around, and then they're, they're trying to settle it, and the students are actually running around the school, and now they're screaming, you know, I don't wanna quote them, but you know, that's, and we're trying to settle and comment, and it, as it's escalating, that's where it goes to the arrest type of situation. We're not, you know, my officers aren't here to monitor a classroom for an out of control student that tells the teacher, you know, four letter word, that's not what we're here for.
Right.
Thank you so much. I have a few questions Chief, with regards to this. Thank you so much for being here, thank you again. Also, Officer Romero for being here, just a few technical questions. When you're in the school resource role during the daytime, are you dressed in plain clothes as you are now, or full uniform?
No, I'm fully uniformed.
Full uniformed, and Chief, is there a reason why, and I only ask because I've been, I've lived in other communities, like Waterbury, Connecticut where I'm from, we've had school resource officers for years, and they still are licensed to carry, have all their stuff, but they're plain clothed, so they look like part of the teaching staff. So, I was just wondering, is that a your decision, or is that a district decision?
No, that's my decision, that's a business decision. I'm trying to have a, I'm trying not to have, not the, we're not looking for a military uniform presence, what I'm looking for is an officer that is, can relate to the kids, what is in uniform, and is quickly distinguishable in an emergency.
Okay, and again, and I thank you, and my suggestion, again, and just being me, someone who's looked at studies and impact, without you wanting to create that mentally wise, it could create that sentiment with that, you know what I'm saying? So for me, just a suggestion, I love the plain cloth look, we could still wear a shield or a badge. I would like to see a day where we can have our school resource officers look like they're part of the staff, and yet still stand out in some way, and whether it's New York, when my daddy used to go to PS 84, and they were still plain clothed, and they had the metal chain with the badge right there, they still stuck out. But I think that, again, in the psyche of that, creating that, without you wanting to, with this as well, I do respect, and we might have to agree to disagree, again, you're the chief, so you make that call, but I truly would advocate, in the future, just going down that route. I think that it will create that sense, and that's just my opinion. Second question would be with regards to, when it comes to the point of a student fighting, and again, I'm not sure if that's a, you know, and again, I'm grateful the receiver's here, Doctors Reich, please feel free to join us. When is it the decision, I only know because again, I, I'm speaking to my own experience, and my experience of my peers growing up, you got suspended if you got caught fighting for the first time, you went to peer mediation, it didn't always necessarily lead to an arrest. So, is that a, again, a district?
So, and I would tell you, because kids fight, that does not always lead to arrest.
Okay.
Alright?
So that's, that's my question.
So, when you're looking at the, I guess the graduated stages, one of the things we would look at would be, if, you know, if I'm the officer there, is, did it occur in the officer's presence? Generally speaking in my profession, we don't allow crimes to occur in our presence. We, when that does, we take action. So if someone's committing an assault of behavior in an officer's presence, more than likely they're gonna get physically arrested for that, they're gonna be taken into custody. Has someone been injured? Has the level of assault where somebody's bleeding, they got a bloody nose, whatever they may. And then finally, the other piece we have to factor into consideration sometimes is, and unfortunately this happens sometimes, was this a 2-on-1 type situation? Where they really, might have been payback from a previous time, where they jumped the individual? Those things lead to an arrest.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, I think it segues more into question 4 a little bit, and I know, and I wanna allow my colleagues all to ask those questions.
Can we stay on 2 for a second?
Yeah, I'm still, I'm still on question 3 actually, is where we're at. So with regards to, yep, with regards to, my follow-up question is, do you have the arrests made in these schools? Were there arrests made in other places throughout the district, throughout the year? That, like, you know, I'm not sure, like if Morgan, or Lawrence, or Ian White, did any of those other schools have any arrests this year, to your knowledge?
I didn't poll those numbers, but because of the lower grades, I have to imagine, if they were, that was an abnormality.
Abnormality, okay.
Again, I'm going up just based on the, on the age of the children involved.
Okay. If you would, just for me Chief, again, I'm gonna, you know, just in my discussion, I would like to see citywide, including all the schools, what the arrests were, just city, district wide. And I thank you for pulling these 3 stats, but I wanna see if there was an arrest in Morgan, or Ian White, or Kelly, or, you know, just district wide, because they do through, go K through 8. And I know personally, I've heard of an instance or 2 where at least 1 individual, I know, firsthand of who was arrested for Morgan. So I would like to see the district wide statistics broken down by school if possible. Those are all my questions that I have for following up.
No, she first, and I'll go afterwards.
Did you have, uh, Gladys, go first.
Yeah, I just wanna know what type of intervention we do, or if there's any, maybe this is a question to Doctor Strike, um, Strike, I'm sorry. In regards to these individuals, I know that they may be suspended for some time, there may be, I don't know, some legal repercussions or something, but if they do return, what, what happens next?
Yeah, so, at the high school level, we have restorative justice at Holyoke High, and then Dean has now begun to introduce some restorative practices, they call it our, forget the term, it's, but they have a similar approach about, you know, welcoming students back and making amends for what occurred. Obviously, the restorative justice program at Holyoke High continues to get stronger, there's more resources there, and, so there's that. I think one of the things we're trying to improve on too is, for some students, if they're struggling and there's a behavior incident, in some cases, it may be the school's not serving them well, and so we're looking at alternative options for them, and so we've, part of our secondary redesign, we've, we've opened up, we have partnership with Lighthouse, we have a few students who are at Lighthouse, we have students that are in our Pathways Program, we have students in Gateway. I'm not saying that all those students have had incidents, but sometimes if there's a pattern of issues, I don't wanna, it's not just about the student, it's just also about whether the high school, either high school's serving them well, and so we're committed, we don't have anything like that at the middle school, which is troubling to me, but at the high school, we have probably 80 or so students that are in what I would call alternative paths. And so that's another option that we can have to better serve them, because what I don't wanna do is have them out of school tutoring, that's not as valuable as for them to be in a, a social setting where they're getting actually a good academic experience.
School Committee Woman, Fave?
So, I have a question, but I'm not sure where it's gonna fall under, so. So one of the things that I've been really advocating for, especially children with special education related to mental health, is something that I haven't seen, is that they have a crisis plan already developed. And something that I'm really looking at is not just making it for the school, but more citywide, so that even when they're out in the community, if an officer happens to bump into them, because they're doing something, it's, how do you approach? Like when you see them green, they're doing okay. When they're starting to get yellow, then what interventions are we gonna put into place to get them back to green before they get to red?
So, so I, you know, I can say, you know, we've probably trained 75% of the police department in crisis intervention training. We started this several years ago before anybody else in the area was doing it. I'd like to get the entire police department trained in it. The reality is, I, I think, you know, Massachusetts policing in general is a couple of years behind the times, but at some point, that's gonna be mandatory for everybody. Now, that doesn't fix everything, but it certainly gives the officer a much better perspective of a young man or a young lady in crisis mode, and it, you know, and it gives the officer some strategies, and, and I, and I'm being old school with this, but what I'm, what I'm talking about is, if someone's in crisis mode, and I'm trying to get them to do something, to get out of the street, or whatever the case may be, and they're not, and, and quite frankly, they're not listening to me, me as the officer yelling at them louder doesn't fix that problem, right? It just sometimes escalates it. So that's part of what it is. Now, when you go on, you're talking about on an individual basis, I'd love to tell you that all of our citizens that are, we frequently come in contact that are sometimes having mental health crises, is, the officer's got a pretty good handle on, you know, it's so-and-so again, it's so-and-so again. They got a pretty good handle on that. But to have an absolute crisis plan for every, every person, we don't have that at this time. I know I've had some conversations with some parents who have some adult age.
Children.
Children, that are, that they worry about, and I says, "Well, give us a call, we can sit down, we can try to work out, work something out ahead of time, and try to red flag that in our computer, should we have to come to your house, we'll know that before we get there." But to the degree to say that, that's citywide, that's not accurate.
No, can I, so, it, it isn't something that's happening now, I just know from personal experience, I had developed one myself many years ago. But why I say it is because right now, studies are showing that 1 in 5 children are being affected by mental health illnesses, and they're actually being diagnosed. Anxiety Disorder is the main one. The other thing is you have children that are on the spectrum, and not, not just thinking autism in the sense that they may not talk, or whatever. There's children that have what's called pervasive developmental disorder, developmental delay. They're on the spectrum, they may look to you like everything's okay, but it just so happens that once they actually start talking, and you're trying to explain to them something that you would think they would understand, it really just goes right over their head. Some don't like you to touch them, if you touch them, now you're escalating it to a different, to a different level. So it's those kinds of things that if we can put it into a sort of crisis plan, just noting the different things that may actually trigger, because to me, when, when the student or whomever, the individuals are already in crisis, almost to the point of having to be Section 12, which, I'll ask you about that, what's the trigger, how do we remove it, and how do we get them to de-escalate?
Well, again, I'll go back to, most of the police department is trained to try to recognize that type of behavior, try to use a different approach with that, with not trying to escalate that into an out of control situation. Because, in, in, quite frankly, I've had some officers that have been, I guess the best word to say is converted, to go, "Wow, this really works." You know, some of my seasoned officers. So to sit there and say there's an absolute ABC plan, plan to do this, I, that wouldn't be doing it justice.
Well, no, I know that it's not developed, it's something that I'm trying to, for families, to be more proactive for their children.
And what I'm telling you is, a significant portion of the police department has been trained in, in these skill sets to recognize that, and to diffuse them. And, again, I think that's just the wave, the future of policing.
Have any of the officers, if they come into contact with a student that looks like they're in crisis, have they else ever made the judgment of Section 12-ing them?
I, I haven't polled numbers as far as Section 12 of students.
I have done it myself.
So versus an arrest, it would be more of a Section 12?
When you're a school resource officer, you have to get to know the school as your home, your second home, like I explained to the chief. I have my first home, which is my personal home. As a school resource officer, you have to make that school your home. You have to know who is your staff, and who are your kids, and what kids, like you say, have these mental issues, what kids have this, what kids have that. And as you're in the school for so many years, you get to know these kids. So have I, have we have Section 12 kids? Yes, we have. How you deal with them? In a nice, passionate way. Okay, I've been trained for several years for this type of crisis through NASRO, which is School Resource Officer Training, and then I went to the training that the chief sent us to. We've been doing, school resource officer, we've been doing this since day 1. This is nothing new to us, which for other officers is something new. At school, and I have done it several times, I, I cannot count how many kids we have Section 12 here, with the help of the nurse, teen clinic, principals, teachers, and along with myself, where basically, for a school resource officer, we're almost like, like a bystander, make sure that the person's not going to get hurt. That all, the first thing is, make sure that, that that person's not gonna get hurt, is their safety? We're not looking to handcuff anybody. I wouldn't, that, that would never happen.
And that's what I was, it's good that you said who's involved, because I was gonna ask, is there a nurse at any point involved to assess the situation?
Every time, every time that we have to deal with a crisis like this, as ambulance is called, and ambulance are the ones, if the person has to be physically put in a stretcher, and the ambulance operators, whoever show up, are the ones to do that. I assist if they ask for assistance. It's not something that I take upon, that I, just because I am the officer, I have total control. No, there's protocol that you take.
School Committee Woman, Feliciano Sims?
Yeah, hi. Thank you again for coming. Um, question, when there is no, when there's nothing going on in school, like no issues or concerns, what is the role of the SRO? Like what are you doing throughout the day? And then also, when a student is arrested, like the follow-up, is there a follow-up with the officer, and what does that look like?
When, when there's nothing going on, you have a so quiet day, and you never say that word in school.
Yeah.
My role is, I, I walk around the school, I enter classrooms. If there's teachers, I have connected with teachers, if they, they're talking about a subject, about law, or any type of history of law, they'll call me in the office, and they'll ask you, "Officer Mel, hey, can you come in for 20 minutes and speak to the kids about questions answered?" Sometimes, I'll just interact with the kids inside. Now, I also have, like a clipboard, a school resource officer, we're here for, for the student. Our last, you know, people might think that we're here to arrest, and, and make these kids, you know, think that the blue, blue uniform is just something to be afraid, no, we're here to help these kids. And I have students come into my room, they sign in, they sign out, and they'll talk about their problems at home, problems with boyfriend, girlfriend, okay? And we give them advice, you know, some students will come in just to talk about, "Hey, I do, I wanna be a police officer, how do I do this, how do I that?" I have a program here where a lot of the kids are starting to get their license, and I'll, they bring the book, or I get the book for them at my own cost, and I'll take the book, and I'll highlight it, what they need to read, and I'm in that, probably at a 98% that the kids always pass. And I've had, this year I've had like 4 kids who got their, their license and their permits. So we look to interact with the kids, that's what our school resource officers do, because we're trained to do that. That's what we, that's what we, we do, we make this our second home. And when they are arrested, like I, I've had 3 arrests here for fighting, and both incidents have happened in my presence. I've had several fights that have not happened in my presence, and I have, again, a protocol with the dean of student, with the principal, and we talk about it, and put the kid in, "Okay, you handle it, it's fine, you know, there's no problem." But when they come back, I do mediation with both students. They have to come see me, because I need to know what the issue was. It's something that I have to know, because I go around, and I actually walk into the kids' classroom, and I'll, I'll ask them, "How are you doing? Good. Any problems, any issues?" I'll see them in the hallway, and I'll call them by their name, I don't say student, I, because I get to know them in a personal way, you know? And some of these kids, one of them I've learned that was having a lot of issues at home. And little by little, she, she is connecting with me, and I'm helping her do that.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Before I give it to Joan, I just had a quick follow-up question, so, because it keeps coming up repeatedly. So if a student fights in your presence, that's warranted for arrest, correct? But if a student doesn't, it doesn't?
Oh.
So, so, so again, just, just follow my thought process here. So, if, and again, I heard the chief's reasoning, if, if something happens that's criminal in your presence, they're getting arrested, but then if a student fights in the cafeteria, you guys aren't around, or it happened down the hall, you're not around, they might not be arrested. Doesn't that create a gray area then for students, as far as the level of fairness, as far as what is this role then? If I'm seen, I get arrested, but if I fight down the, down the hall, or in Mrs. Joan class, when the resource officer. when the resource officer isn't there, I might not get arrested?
So, and I disagree with your view of we're trying to set a double standard there. You know, we can't allow people to... If people are engaging in violent tumultuous behavior in front of us and I go, "Don't worry about it", that's not my role. My role is to stop that, to keep the peace and the safety. So if I get there after the fact, nobody's hurt, it wasn't, somebody got jumped on, I'm not overly concerned about it. And I think there isn't. I think there is a big difference. So it's the same thing as, I hate to use this, but you know, if somebody uses a four-letter word and they use it down the hall, whatever, right? What do I care? Right? They use a four-letter word to me personally, I don't really care. But if they're a group of people and they're throwing a bunch of F-bombs in front of me and they're creating disturbance, I think that's a problem. And I do, and I do see that as a distinct difference.
Yeah, I just, again, and I, with all due respect, I'd have to agree to disagree with you, chief, because for me, that's the difference in standards then, right? And that then, then creates if... So for me, I think my follow-up question is, if we as a district are believing in restorative justice, does the department believe in restorative justice? Is that a model that you then as a SRO can implement in your work and life? Because to me, that's what I want to know. If that is the will of the force to really believe in the social justice model and principle that the high schoolers are using, that we're implementing here at Dean. And again, I'm concerned too, not just about these two schools, district-wide. What about the other schools that don't have an SRO 24/7 hours a day? When I know, and I've gotten calls from parents, hey, the teacher picks up the phone and call 911, there is no of this getting to know the school or community. What happens for that? Is the police department committed? And again, this is going to go into question four later, so I won't get into that. Do you believe in the restorative justice principles and models? Is this something that the police department is on board with that the schools are doing?
Well, what I'll tell you is I believe in working with Dr. Zeig and the school system to address all these challenging issues. But I'm going to tell you right now, just based on our conversation back and forth, you and I aren't going to agree on everything. You know, so if a young man or a young lady gets in trouble and we can get them help, I don't want them part of the criminal justice system. I'd rather get them help. It's the same thing, you know, invest upfront or pay forever down the road. So if we can divert somebody, I'd rather do that. But there are times when behavior is what I would consider crossing the line. When you're attacking someone in front of an officer, when two people are ganging up on someone and attacking someone, when, when somebody gets injured. I think if we don't take action, we lose control of the school.
Yes, and thank you, chief. I'm not saying, again, that under extreme circumstances of safeties of one's life, what I'm asking specifically has nothing to do with you or I or my personal belief or yours. Does the police department believe in the restorative justice principles and models that are being implemented in the school district? Because that'll, for me, and again, will have a huge difference and trajectory and tone of where we go from a district point. For me, on the funding side as a city council, right? Because here's what's happening. We're saying we're a million short on, you know, transportation or whatever. Or the restorative justice program is short money. This is with all due respect. We're paying $135,000 for two school resource officers, right? I've been to schools and models where the restorative justice model works where all the teachers, all the faculty, all the staff are in there to do exactly what you're saying. Invest at the beginning before the things get to that level. So only in extreme cases is someone called. But what I want to know is, again, is the police department, irregardless of Nelson Roman here sitting here personally, do you believe in the principles and models of the restorative justice program that they're doing?
And for me to sit here and say, "Yes, we're absolutely in 180%," that's not accurate. What I would tell you is, I'm here to work with Dr. Zeig, I'm here to work with the school. I'd much rather intervene and help a child than arrest a child. Arrest is not, is not the answer. We'd rather not arrest. But sometimes that is required of what we do. You know, we talked earlier a little bit about, you know, I think somebody used the figure of 80 students. And what I would say is, you know, whether it be a dean or the high school or whatever, who are the top 20 or 30 students that are maybe having some issues at home, academically, discipline-wise? We should be having a conversation before it turns into a fight in the cafeteria and doing everything we can for that student before we get into that. And I don't think that's happening completely.
Thank you.
The, I just want to thank you for following up. I was going to ask about, you do follow-up, Mel, with what happens afterwards? So that was one of the questions I was going to ask. And, you know, a good friend of mine who I grew up with and ended up being, I didn't know that until years later, was Irene's uncle, Edwin Rana Sestash, was an officer for I don't know how many years. He's not doing it though at the school, at the high school anymore, is he still?
No, he works for the detective bureau.
Detective Bureau, no, but he did it there for years and...
Yeah, he worked for the two of them, Alex, who I...
Right, but he, when he was there as a resource officer, I mean, just, you know, wherever he saw... I always got to say piranha, because that's always, that's, I always call them. And Edwin or Officer Sestash, I'll say. Was, you know, the kids, just, you know, just like you, they see him on the street, they look up to him, they talk to him. So, you know, it's so important that you guys have made that connection with, with the kids and that they can look for you. And I know a lot of kids have gone to the resource officer over the years for assistance, either at home or with problems in school. So I appreciate, I think you, the job that you do and the other resource officers do in the school are really one step above, if I could say, for outreach. I mean, for how important that is. I mean, but the position that police officers have in general public is overwhelming, but you're taking it to a next level, because you're dealing directly with the students. You know what I'm saying? So I appreciate you, you're doing that efforts. You know what I'm saying? I'm saying it's a real big responsibility that you're taking on. So I appreciate you, you're doing that role. Okay? Secondly, though, and I think you gave a good analogy of what you... And I would think that if a, if a fight broke out between Mildred and Irene tonight, you'd have to arrest them, because it happened in your presence. So I think that's state law, isn't it? Isn't that state law? You don't have a choice if something happens in front of, in front of you.
Well, no, there is some discretion, so...
Okay, there is some, okay.
There is some discretion. But I've also, and my officers have also sworn an oath to uphold the law.
Right.
I mean, I mean, there's, there's going overboard on the law.
Right.
You know, but, but I will tell you, I don't think there's an officer in the country that'll say, "If you commit a crime in my presence, I'm not going to step in and make that arrest."
Right. And but, so this gets to another point is, is we've had, over the last couple of years, a super number of bomb threats or threats against our schools. And my understanding is, is that we have known who the people were maybe possibly in certain circumstances and haven't done anything to those individuals. And it seems as though, you know, if, if we're setting an example and taking something like that serious, perhaps if we made the arrests on those individuals, perhaps we wouldn't be getting so many that we're getting in a district. Look at West Springfield last week or two weeks ago, where they had a threat, so a cyber-type threat. And, you know, it was like national news that they had apprehended the individual, that the mayor is out there giving a press conference, the kids were sent home, and it was on every single station. I mean, for a while there, it was almost happening every week in Holyoke, I think. Or every, you know, for a few times, we had a significant amount over the last two years, I would say at least.
And don't forget out east, there were...
Oh, yeah. They were doing, they were doing it, and I think that day, that guy was involved with two of them as well. But my question is, what are we, I mean, to me, if I'm a kid in West Springfield, I'm saying, "Well, I'm not going to be something stupid, do something stupid like that again, because they're going to catch us." My thing is, what message have we sent? Because I don't think anybody's been caught or reprimanded for that. And I know it's an issue that has been bothersome to me and administration that we're not following through on that.
So Dr. Zeig and I have talked about this very issue.
Okay.
And I understand your concerns. But please realize, if we've identified someone that we can have probable cause to arrest, I would most certainly do that.
Okay.
Identifying someone and having probable cause are two different things. And then being able to bring something before the court on that. It just is. As far as the bomb threats and the cyber threats that come on, we take those seriously. We put a great deal of resources into that. We take those very seriously. Sometimes it's something we can chase down, sometimes we're chasing, you know... I think there was a threat at some point not too long ago. The threat actually originated out of Texas and somebody just copied it and posted it on their Facebook page. So those are the types of things where sometimes we end up chasing down.
Hey, I guess it just got to be a little point where like, I think it was in Ware and then West Springfield, within a week of each other, they had same type of scenarios and they seemed to have got the person, boom, boom, boom. And I'm not saying that you're not trying to get them, it's just that, why aren't we getting the same resources or maybe help maybe that they were getting? Maybe we're not getting help from other agencies or whatever that West Springfield and Ware got. Maybe they're not taking it. I mean, I want our kids to have the same exact protection as kids that go to any other, other school.
Well, at the end of the day, the safety of the children is our most important concern.
But I'm asking from your aspect is, is how they are able to track them and where...
You know, I can't talk about their cases. I'm not familiar with their cases. It's great that they made deals or arrests. I can tell you, we take those threats seriously, try to run them down, but a lot of times they'll run into a dead end.
I'm just glad you guys have had that communication and I just thank you very much. And again, thanks again for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Row Martinez?
Yeah, so it seems like our conversation is about security and safety and our protocols. I have a question. How, how are we doing with the camera in our school systems? Cameras that were supposed to be available since I was at a school committee board and I know at times they were never functioning, what's...
Yeah, they have been installed and they are functioning. Do we have enough coverage for all aspects of our schools? No, but the ones that we had sitting in the warehouse, I think you might have been part of that conversation, they've all been installed. Holyoke High and Dean have the most cameras. At our middle schools, we don't have, we have some, but not enough to have full coverage. And sometimes when incidents occur, we, you know, in a building, we sometimes have footage, we sometimes don't. But we don't have, now they're all functioning.
So, Dr. Zrake, this is a question, I guess, for you as well as the chief at the same time. So this is all, clearly I file these for a purpose and a reason. This all, to me, has to have the larger conversation of the district realignment. Whatever way we decide to go as a district, if we create a middle school, does that mean then we're going to have, or is the district wanting to have resource officers at the middle school level? For me, in these schools, we have school resource officers in Holyoke High, one, with 14 arrests, Dean has three, PEC has one, there's no school resource officer at PEC, right? So arrests are inevitable and the police are still going to come in during extreme circumstances to keep us safe. As a district, based on these trajectories and models, do we then invest? Because again, it's all going to come before the body and the council. Are we going to then invest in the school resource model? Or are we investing in the restorative justice program? And not to say it has to be and/or...
Yeah.
But the reason why I'm having these larger conversations, because we need to know where we're going to budget. If the police department budget is short, the school committee budget is short, arrests are going to be made in extreme circumstances to keep us safe no matter what. But where do we then align the resources? And again, if we're investing in cameras and divestables and all that, what is your take on this?
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't know if those things are mutually exclusive, as you said. I do think, I want our, I think our students and staff need to have positive relationships with police. Whether that's during the school but out of school, I think that relationship's important. And so how that looks, I think, I think we have some learning to do as a community and the chief has been very open to those conversations. I don't, you know, most communities right now in the state have a resource, have a school resource officer, sometimes more than one at the high schools, and then they often will have some at the middle, middle school. You know, I'd like to see a day where we don't need to have those. I want, but I also want to look at what are the models? I think restorative justice plays, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Izzy over there. But I, because I know he's been a part of that discussion. I think restorative justice is a, is a huge part of enhancing safety and security in buildings. I think we need to study collectively what that can look like in a more progressive way. I will say that the chief has been willing to engage in those conversations. I think we're not perfectly aligned and I'm not, I mean, as a, you know, school, we're educators. So we, you know, my mindset is around, I don't want to see, obviously we don't want to see kids arrested. He doesn't want to see kids arrested. They're, they have different responsibilities around their work and, and, you know, he's operating a department that has, you know, has certain protocols and procedures. And then we're educators, you know, so we, we have a different philosophy. We want to grow not only academic, that needs to be for students, but we want to grow their social emotionally. We also want them to grow as their ability to self-manage, regulate themselves and manage themselves. So I think it's a, it's a call for us collectively to really look at, you know, I don't want to say no, we don't need school resource, because I think they can play a really important role. And I've seen, like when Mel's out there playing football with the kids, I wish I could still run around like Mel can. But I mean, that's powerful, right? Those relationships are powerful. That, a lot more powerful than just walking around, checking to see whether somebody's doing the right things. So I think we're committed, we've had, believe me when we say we've had a number, a number of conversations. And every time there's an arrest, the chief has said to me, "If you have a concern or question about it, come see me." And we have. And have we agreed on everything? No, but I think the dialogue is there. And I, I still think as a community, we need to look at other, we have to continue to look at models that will keep our kids safe, but also enhance the relationship that they have with police.
Thank you, and I agree with you, sorry, just to follow up. So, and I completely agree, and I thank you and your team. Like I said, it's not that I'm not for the school resource officers. It's just, I would like to see similar, and I love the model you actually just did with the high school redesign.
Yeah.
I would like to see the police department, the community as well, because there are missing links too with, it takes a village to raise a child when you go back out into the community, and the chief and I agree on that. So we have, if we could do a similar redesign model around what this looks like once we know the future of the school, what the model's going to look like, that'll help us as well. I think that that would be an interesting way to engage everyone, but even going to other communities to see what they do best. And again, I could only speak from my experience. In Waterbury, Connecticut, we did have school resource officers. But again, this was going to segue to question four. They were all mostly retired. They had to have the state officer training. A lot of them were retired officers, former officers who then are staff of the school district. They were in charge of the peer mediation or the peer, you know, whatever response efforts were in the school building. So besides being the officer that yes, they were also in charge of that restorative process to be the leaders who would train the other teens to then lead the facilitation. So I'm just trying to find a way that we can connect those dots. So it's exactly, not one and. And we have to talk about, again, I hate to sound like my colleagues on the council, either saving money or aligning the money where it works as a win-win for everyone. Because what we're getting, what I'm getting as a counselor in Gladys, oh, they're, they're cutting the money from restorative justice or we're cutting the money from this. So I'm trying to find a way where we can make it work, where the funds are there and we can maybe align those things. So if we are going to move in that direction, I want to be able to have that resource officer truly be a resource for not just the discipline, like you're doing currently, and I thank you for that, in the community, here's where you go to find this, or connecting those dots. So I thank you with that. And I'll let Mildred ask the final question on this and then we're going to move on to item four.
Well, it's not a question. I know you guys went into safety and everything. I'm going to be late on asking this question, because I don't really like to interrupt people. But when it comes to speaking about cameras and the security and stuff, would that have been something that should have been done in executive session versus open?
No, because that's public knowledge as far as the ordering of the cameras and it's been through appropriations.
Ordering, but where they're, like you were talking about where you still, they're still not working. Or would that have been, no?
I think where it's a problem is if I, if I revealed where all the cameras were.
Okay, no, just checking.
Yeah, it's a good question. I would never give you a document that would say, yeah. These are where all the cameras are.
Just want to make sure.
Thank you so much. So moving on to item number four, to read it quickly. Order that the Holyoke Police Department appear before the joint committee and provide a job description, qualification, needs and the selection process for the school resource officers. So again, I'll hand it over to the chief.
Okay, so we can all go online and pull something up. And the Department of Justice will even tell you, there's no precise definition of an SRO, because they wear many hats. But I'd start off and say, "Well, there's certainly a sworn police officer assigned to work in the schools. They do conduct enforcement, but they counsel and they educate. The goal for them is to work in collaboration with the school in a community policing model or mindset to become part of the school, whether it be the social structure or the faculty." So they're, as, as Officer Romero calls it, his second home, to become part of that, that family network. They're always working to increase school safety. They do their best to establish positive... They do their best to establish positive relationships with the students and the faculty. And at the end of the day, I want them to be role models for the students.
Thank you, chief. So, um, just to follow up, so is there a specific, I think for me what I'm asking for this? Is there a specific job description for the SRAs that exist in Holyoke? So again, I know you said you go on a DRJ.
No, there is not.
So there, so there is none? There's, there's just what you said this today?
Correct, correct.
And, uh?
And then, and then the training that they've been given previously as school resource officers.
Okay.
But there's nothing in black and white that says A, B, C, D, and E.
Okay, so, so my question is, let's say you retire tomorrow, you're, you're gone and we have two at Holyoke High, correct, and one here? Is that the current makeup or is it just one and one?
One and one.
One and one. So say, you know, he leaves tomorrow, how then does the next SRO, how are they selected? What's the hiring process? Is it just, you have the training, you're up next at bat, or how does that work?
All right, so, uh, let's get into where we are today. So we'll talk a little bit about qualifications. Realize I have to work within collective bargaining agreements. Part of that collective bargaining agreements are all my officers go to shifts based on seniority. If I have an officer working during the day hours, during the school hours, my selection of officers to work that are who's on patrol based on seniority. So what I would tell you is, I have nineteen officers assigned to days, they're all senior officers. That's the pool I have to select from to place into a school resource officer position. I can't vary to other shifts, I'm prohibited by contract. So if you have an officer that's got five years on the job and he's on midnights, I can't put him in a school resource officer job. Can't do it.
So, no, no, no.
So just, let me go on. So now we're looking at, when, where the situation we're here in Holyoke. I have nineteen officers assigned to day shift. I have several of them, including Mel and Manny Rivera, that have been trained as SRAs and have done this before. So they actually have the training. And then I go, oh, and who is interested in the job? Cause I wanna put, you know, who wants to do the job? And then of the nineteen who've been trained and who's interested, at the end of the day, who do I believe will be a good fit in the community that'll act well? That's how we get to where we are today.
Okay, thank you, chief. So I guess my only statement to that is if there's no job description for the job and the job is just SRO and this, and how does, how does the community or the district or the students or the parents then hold that SRO? With, without a job description. So again, that's just my, you know, sentiments on that. I would like to see, just like if they were to try to become the chief of police, there's a job description or captain, or there's these specific roles uh, that are listed out with years of experience and qualifications. And for me, this is irregardless, I, besides the national SRO training, which, you know, I know that's put on by whomever. I would like to see, is the SRO required to go to district-wide faculty meetings on social and emotional learning training? Are they meeting SEUs? And then my follow-up question is, the district and the police department had a memorandum of understanding, right, for the SRAs? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is that current or is that expired or is that a negotiation or?
Um, I believe I just signed one a couple of weeks ago that the DA put out, a new memorandum of understanding that came out this fall.
Yeah, it was, um, I'm not sure that, I, I'd have to look at exactly, but, uh, the, the MOU that we had signed in the past is not just for SRAs, it's just the, it's in a working, it's how the department and the schools will work together. There isn't, there, it's not specifically for SRAs, it's just police and sharing information, that kind of thing. I can, I can send you a copy of it if you would.
If you can please. And so then my follow-up question, again, this is with no disrespect. So these officers are getting pulled based on seniority. I'm looking at an already stressed city council budget, so they get paid then at that rate because of collective bargaining. I won't get into that. That's fine, neither here nor there. So I guess my question is, would it be, and again, this is for all of us to think about collectively, would it make more sense then to take this position and make it a position of the Holyoke school system, right, still having to go through those training that could be hired, interviewed, job description? That is outside of that realm. Because again, I come from a community, two communities, Waterbury and Hartford, Connecticut, where the SRAs are all retired, they work for the school district, they're not in the force, they used to be in the force. They're still training capable men and women of the force, but they're not having to go through this. Because again, this is just my sentiment on it. These men and women are great, but without a job description, how do you choose someone for the job? And again, that's collective bargaining, that's neither here nor there. And then on the day shift, I already know that there's certain, my follow-up question is again, as a ward counselor, you know, in our conversation, the way you've taught me how it goes, each ward is broken down to having a certain amount of officers assigned to it, correct?
Correct.
So if the SRAs are gone, you're gonna pull one of the officers from the ward? Is that where it comes from or just anywhere that you have available?
If the SRO, I'm sorry.
Like the senior level staff that you have that can fill in for the SRO if they're out or go away tomorrow?
Oh, well, we'll fill it, but that's only a temporary fill. That's who we can get our hands on, quite frankly.
Who we, and then, so that's again, my, my follow-up then. So for me, if you just fill it, how does then that person meet the requirement and then what is the job?
That's just a temporary stopgap till the SRO comes back. That's the reality of it.
So then my, again, but my follow-up question, how do you then determine what the job is? Like, so you're just, you, you, the selection process of, hey, do you meet these requirements to be the SRO? For the next person, say all these two go, how would you determine, do you have people on bench who have gone through this SRO training besides?
No, we don't. We would say who has an interest, uh, who can I reach, and then we'd have to get them training.
So is, are you opposed to it? Again, cause if it's not in a specific MOU, I would like to see this position defined with an understanding or with a knowledge of where the funding's coming from. Because at a hundred and thirty-five thousand, this is just me thinking, chief, no disrespect to you. Hundred thirty-five thousand dollars could probably pay for a school resource officer who's also trained in restorative justice, who then runs the programs in the high schools and we're saving money, not trying to figure out how we're figuring out and paying for these people. Granted, they should have a background in criminal, they should have a background, and they're retired and so they know the force and they build those relationships. But at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, like, is there a way to align that money? Do you get what I'm saying? So is the police department, if there's no specific understanding around the SRAs, then are you open to that position being just like part of the district?
And if, if the district wants to hire retired officers to go do that, they're more, they're more than capable of doing that. It's just, they won't be working for me. That's the reality. They would work for the district and, and, and that's fine. I, you know, I, that's up to, that's a school decision. Uh, but, but if, if it's one of my officers, they're working for me at the end of the day.
Yeah, and that, and the chief said that, we've had that conversation before, you, as a school district. Before I came, they had a model where, um, it was, oh, uh, it was different officers because it was, they were, we didn't have the same officer there every day.
So, so what happened?
Go ahead.
Go back a little bit in time, even before that.
Even before that, yeah.
Even before that, we had, uh, two officers, pretty steady, they did it all the time. Mel was one of them. And then what was brought to light was, uh, uh, Truth and Lending, former previous, previous city treasurer brought this to light. The school department was supposed to be paying for this and they hadn't been paying all along. And I was short-staffed. And then it came to, okay, well, we need to pay for this. School department, and I said, well, here is, here is what it cost me. Do you wanna pay this? And at the time, before Drs. I got here, they said, you know, I could save a couple of dollars if we do this as a detail. And that's what we did, and that's what we did for a year, and they did it as a detail. Now, when you had that detail, each school, it, it was open to all the officers and, and the officer would change on a, could change on a daily basis. But after, it'd been going for a period of time, the same six or twelve officers were the ones, cause they kinda understood the school, school kinda understood them. They just kinda, they, they kinda worked that out themselves. And you'd get the same dozen officers working. Uh, but then we went back to, and, uh, we go, okay, do we wanna continue that? You're not getting that. The officer knows the kids by first name, you're not getting that relationship, you're not building that trust. And that's why we went back to what it was, with the exception of now that the school is paying for them. I mean, you go down to Springfield, I think they pay for twenty-two or twenty-three SRAs, whatever the number is that they have down there. Um, my old jurisdiction in Connecticut, we had, I think it was four SRAs and a sergeant, full-time. Uniform mine, you, but they, you know, they, they had that full-time and that was what was committed to the schools. That was their job. And so they handled the high school, they had a, a, an alternative school that they handled. Um, they had handled the junior high and anything else that happened to schools, they were right on it. But they had the, they had the financial resources to do that.
Allow me to speak of schools. Uh, years ago, and I'm talking about years before the chief here, we had seven school resource officers trained in our school. We had, uh, one at Holyoke High School, one at Dean, one at PEC. Uh, and we had two, two guys that roamed the middle, the K through eight. And then we had a captain who was in charge of us. And as these officers either got injured, uh, one passed away in, in, in a, uh, accident. And they all left, but they never were replaced. For years, I've been a school resource officer now twelve years. The last, chief, you've been here now, what, five years? For four years, now the school has started to pay. Before, the school was not paying anything. It was just done by the police department. And we had seven. Had seven. And we all worked in the schools, we were all trained. But as these guys left, they've never, they were never replaced. Stood there, we just stood with the ones we have right now.
Any questions? Uh, yeah. For now?
I'm gonna forget my question now. Um, come back to me. I just, um, look, chief, you're, you had ended up, oh, with the, with the, um, the budget paying for it. The, the, um, that wasn't part of school spending at all, Patrick? About net school spending, that wasn't anything, that was something that that's where?
It's eligible, that's eligible.
It's eligible for it. So what's something that, that the, the city is paying, we're paying for it now?
Yeah, we pay for, our budget covers the cost of the officers, yeah.
But it was something that even though the city was paying before, it was something that they were paying as part of their net school spend?
It was above and beyond that school spending.
It was above and beyond it, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the city, I'm, I don't, I wasn't here at that time, but if that, that's what they were doing, the city was doing that above and beyond their minimum contribution to the schools.
And then what I wanted to ask, uh, Mel, you're at Dean now. Do you see a big difference with Dean this year compared to last two years?
Yes, it's, it's a total, uh, amazing, amazing, amazing. I, I worked for the last, uh, principal that was here and I just can't find the words, how, how bad, but I just, I.
Can we just say we're very happy with the president of Dean and leave it at that?
Well.
Would that be executive session?
Who's at, um, Holyoke High now?
Uh, Manny Rivera.
Does Manny see a difference, um, if it could be something, just a difference this year compared to years past? Would those numbers have been flipped in years past?
I haven't spoken to Manny about that.
We talked, we talked about this the other day. It's pretty sta, it's pretty much the same as it has been.
Okay, I just wonder if the, the ninth grade, having the, the ninth grade difference has made a difference at Dean, if it added anything there?
So I, I don't have the statistical data for you, but in my five-plus years here, whatever it was, I, I would tell you when I first got here, I think we made, um, seemed to make more arrests down in Dean than we do today.
Yeah. And I just wonder if you thought maybe, Mel, you, you're on, you know, we're hearing that, good things about Dean. But wondering if it also is the new administration there and the combination of there's no ninth graders there anymore too?
Yeah, it could, it could be both.
Combination.
Combination.
It's a, it's a much better place than it was year, uh, years ago, according to you.
Yeah.
And statistics. All right, thank you.
Well, I mean, I, I also say ninth graders are ninth graders.
Yeah.
So they're, they're just a little more itchy, I would say.
Well, it's amazing, if anybody went to the forum we had last year with the number of suspensions, when we had that at the high school, the, the amount of suspensions were, you know, I think it was sixty percent were the ninth graders. You know, which was a huge number. Um, and I just, you know, it'd be interesting this year to see what the difference is or if there is a, a difference, um, with the ninth graders. And that was at Holyoke High.
Yeah.
School committee woman in the fifth?
I don't think the majority of the arrests were ninth graders, um, for this year.
This year? I, I would, I would have to dig through the data.
No, uh, no.
So I mean, I, just for, for me, I don't.
No, most of them have not been ninth graders.
I don't think that really the movie.
I mean, there, there may be a few, but most have been, um, um, upper class.
I always thought that it's, it's always the environment. Environment is, you know, it's been a big change here. Students seem to love it here, you know, it's different from past years. And I guess that's why the arrests have gone down. Not so much that we moved the ninth graders.
I, I would, I would con, I would concur with that. Uh, I think, um, the students have a voice here. And now I see, I, I see kids with smiles on their faces. I see students who are coming to school more regularly. I see, uh, students, there's more activities for kids, even without the sports, there's just, uh, they're always putting on spirit events and, um, you know, the intermural league has been really popular, uh, with kids. Um, so I do think the culture is, is student-centered, which I didn't, you know, not, without saying what, without going down that road, it's definitely much more student-centered. Now, I think in Holyoke High, we have some work to do with that. I mean, it's a much bigger school, so you're dealing with a lot, but I, I, I've said this before publicly. I mean, if, when kids, when students feel like they're part of their school and they own their school, you're gonna see numbers decline. Suspension numbers, arrest, arrest, I mean, the, when the culture is about students and when we allow student leaders, like the young people who spoke at the high school redesign, some of the restorative justice, uh, youth peer leaders, we don't have enough of that, uh, happening, um, across the Holyoke High. And I think you would see a difference in, to your point, in some of those behavioral incidents if, uh, students felt like they had more of a voice in their school.
What's that? Uh, thank you. So I just kinda wanna bring it back to the question and focus. Um, so for me, um, colleagues, and I'm just gonna again say, thank you so much again to all of you for being here. Um, I truly appreciate it. I think that this is the, the beauty of, of our joint committee, uh, to be able to have these conversations. I come from the perspective and then it's always, and I know I sound like a, right, unquote, typical city council, always around the budget. How is this gonna shake out at the end of the day when our city's only operating on one point two million left in free cash? And I know we're gonna see multiple departments throughout the year. So for me, the reason why I value this joint committee is specifically around this SRO issue and the moving forward with the restorative justice, the alignment around the budgeting. How does that really look going forward? So for me, to my colleagues, I would like to see today, uh, that we table items number three and four, and I'll explain why. Uh, for me, items three, um, and this is just for me, my committee as a chairman, call me old-school, call me old-fashioned. I like to see data in my hand that's printed out, that I can see and witness. So, um, thank you so much, chief, for agreeing to get us those statistics. Um, I also, um, would like to see, like I said, district-wide, all the arrests for this year. I'd love to see those data statistics on Dean the last couple of years. And I thank you so much, Officer Romero, for all of your hard work and dedication for years. Um, so I would like to table that because I'd like for physically our committee to have that data. Um, and so that way it's part of the record and in our minutes, um, as we've done with other, uh, requests for information we've received. And with regards to, uh, item number four, I'd like to table it to have that larger conversation. Um, and again, I'd like to table it with sending a copy to the school committee, um, from my end. Because what I would like the school committee to do is really engage in that conversation. Um, me as a counselor in Gladys, and again, I can only speak for myself. For me, this is a budgetary issue that also aligns with the work and the trajectory of a just, a district. I think any position in the school, out of the school, in the city should have a job description, a title, experience. Um, and it's a good conversation for you all to have, cause again, I understand my role, I can't jump into that, cause that is the school day-to-day and that's your committee side. Um, but me as a counselor, I wanna table it to see what you guys kick around and what you come up with as a body with regards to this, this matter, item number four, because I do feel, with this, with all due respect to the chief, um, that if we can find a way, again, to look at other communities, maybe we all go on a tour, maybe we go to Manchester. I'd love to see your old stomping grounds, chief. Go to Waterbury, Connecticut, my old stomping grounds. Go to, maybe even Chicago. Let's go check out different districts. And the way that they do, I, I just came back from Chicago this past summer. I went to, you know, Pedro Abisú Campos, uh, uh, high school. And I went to Roberto Clemente, Roberto Clemente, state of the art, they had metal detectors walking in there. You locked your cellphone downstairs, but it was a culture, exactly that, where it was still good. So I, I would like to see what the school committee comes up with. Um, so I'd like to table it with a copy to you all pending our next meeting to see if something comes out of it before I feel that it is complied with. Um, but I think the chief, and for you being here, just to shed the light, um, I think that this committee, if nothing else, has gotten into these, these, tackling these issues for me purely for informational purposes. To also learn what it is you do on, on day-to-day basis. And I thank you for putting yourself on the line and really connecting with these families. I know I've seen you here, when I come, I just poke my head into as a nosy city council. Um, but I thank you so much for your service. Um, but I would like to see these two items tabled, um, and thank the gentlemen for being here this evening. One on information, until we get that physical information to our committee. And then item four, just to send it to you all to see what you can come up with. One on information, until we get that physical information to our committee, and then item four, just to send it to you all to see what you can come up with. Um, if that, it pleases the body, if there's a motion to do that with those two items.
Can you just read the, um, orders to, for the record, just so we can know?
Yep, so, um, item number three is ordered that the chief of police appear before the joint's committee of the city council, school committee, with statistics of all arrests made this year of the Holyoke Public School students. Item number four, ordered that the Holyoke Police Department appear before the committee of the joint committee of school committee and city council, and provide a job description, qualifications needed, and selection process for the school resource officers of the Holyoke Public Schools. Those are the two items I'd like to see tabled, uh, with item number four going to, with a copy being sent to the school committee.
So...
Is there a motion? So, so moved, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No. I think they did a good job complying.
Thanks. Motion carries. On item number two, I would, again, recommend to the body that that order has been complied with. Is there a motion?
There's some, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Item five on the agenda.
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna bring that up after, but I wanted to thank them, because that's all we really need them for tonight, and I don't wanna keep you any later.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a merry Christmas and a safe holiday.
Thanks, thanks again.
Motion to take up item number five?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion number five, uh, filed by myself, Council Roman, ordered that the school department submit a breakdown of all teaching staff of the Holyoke Public School systems and where they currently live. Um, I guess I'll tee this up for the committee, so I requested this on my behalf, uh, for a multitude of issues, and I'll explain in a minute. Um, but I thank Doctors Wright for sending me that information. Um, I was able to do the breakdown, wonky math myself, I hope it i- is the same, um, and for the pure purposes, and I'll explain it to the public watching at home. Uh, one, I, as a personal counselor, it's been my crusade to champion and push for, uh, yes, residency requirements and increasing our diversity across all boards of our government. So this past week, in our city council chambers, we unanimously approved stricter, uh, residency requirements for all department heads of the city, irregardless of where, except for the receiver and this superintendent, that has to be changed, believe it or not, by charter. So, we might be going to ballot for that in the future, but we love Doctor's Wright, we know he already lives here, as do many department heads. With regards to police department, fire department, and all departments, I am crusading, not just saying, hey, where are you living? But what are we not doing as a community to get you to live here? Are we not incentivizing enough? Uh, and I've shared this publicly on many occasions, uh, my partner does work for the school system, yes, um, and even on us, on our joint salary, it's difficult to find a home and try to stay within the confines of my ward. Uh, we're looking at houses now, and it's, we're being priced out, so I'm gonna stay renting an apartment, because literally we're being priced out of our community. So when I filed this order, it came a week after I had seen and read that the city of Chicago did this amazing teachers' village, that is a concept being built in which a whole community is being around, built around, teachers moving in, and the city incentivizing teachers to live in the district. And they're building the community then around where the teachers live. Uh, and so for me, this was not an attack, uh, and I will not attack, and I support fully the teachers, uh, of the city of Holyoke, but we also, as a community, have to start looking at these data points. And I'm doing it along police, fire, all across the board, to see where our, our staff living, and what can we do as a city? And, you know, we have amazing programs like the Community Preservation Act that did pass, yes, I was a supporter of it. Uh, we can create some amazing low to moderate income housing unit for teachers to live in the city, or wanna move here. I wanna be the district where all the teachers live, I would love that. And all the teacher schools go to the Holyoke Public Schools. Or, for those students who are in the Holyoke Public School system, and I know the receiver and, and our mayor have worked on this new pipeline program, for, and students who wanna teach in the district, where are they gonna move to, once they're ready to start teaching in the district? Where can they go to, where can they buy a home to? So, that's why I filed this motion in order, purely for data purposes, purely for statistical purposes, and yes, to draw those similarities between the order that I filed a couple months ago, in saying that we looked at the demographic breakdown of the city as a committee. Uh, and yes, the receiver has done and sent, Iliana, I'm sure, I heard, to put her we go to try to recruit, locally trying to recruit, that's wonderful to diversify our workforce. But we have to look at, both in teachers and fire and police, it sends not only a right message, but you truly then can do those things we were talking about before, as far as connecting with the community, not just inside the building, but outside the building. Um, so with that, I did email the committee members, and I would like Liz, I'll forward it to you, uh, the data that was sent, and I know Doctor's Wright sent it out as well, so I was able to break it down. Um, we're basically, uh, thank you, Doctor's Wright, thirty-two percent of the Holyoke, uh, schoolteachers live in the city, and sixty-eight, uh, live outside of the city, and that's fine. A lot of them are living in Western Mass and the surrounding communities, which we love. Uh, Holyoke has a hundred and fifty-seven or so teachers living in the city, Springfield's number one city outside with thirty-nine, Chicopee with thirty-two, South Havley, Mass with twenty-nine, Westfield twenty-six, uh, West Springfield, that we have a bunch of East Hamptons. Uh, surprising and fun details for me was there's a lot of teachers from Enfield, Connecticut, which I thought was cool, uh, and two teachers from New York, I was like, go ahead, go New York, uh, which is amazing. So, I thank the receiver, and I thank the teachers who did reach out to me publicly to inquire why I filed this order. I need the data to then go back when we try to fight for Community Preservation Act money, or CBDG money, to create these kinds of environments as a city, so individuals don't just say, oh, there goes Nelson, trying to spend the money again on a magical happy land for public employees. Well, no, actually, we need it, because in talking to teachers that I've spoken with, they can't afford to live in the city, or what's the incentive to move from their community to here? So, that's why I filed this order, um, I thank the receiver, I'll open it up to my committee members if they have any questions over the data, but I thought it was a, a phenomenal breakdown, thank you so much for sending Doctor's Wright, as you have, with any other requests we've sent. Um, and that's the plan that I would love to see used this data for, is when Gladys and I go back and Mike Sullivan, and we wanna fight for, basically, a teachers' village, I'm not opposed to stealing ideas and creating a teachers' village.
And, and just, uh, not to inter, but we, we have had those, we've begun those discussions already with the city about incentivizing teachers to live. Well, for, I don't, I, first of all, I want the best teachers in Holyoke, period, so, I'm, I'm, I don't know if, while I would love for teachers to live in Holyoke, I, I, to me, especially when we, um, when recruitment is challenging, um, I, I, I'm always wary of making that a requirement. And I know that in Boston, they moved away from that for teachers, because they, um, they wanted the, you know, they wanted the best, um, and didn't wanna be, um, you know, we didn't wanna be handcuffed by not, um, opening it up to people who didn't live in the city. But that being said, I think the point around incentivizing people is important, live in the community that they, um, that they work and teach, and so we've, Springfield has begun, has already begun this idea of a teacher village. Um, and we, we're, we've, the mayor and I, and, um, had some conversations recently about trying to do that with, um, more affordable rents for teachers, and incentivizing people who, especially recent graduates who wanna come, not just recent, you know, start with the recent graduates, who wanna come and live in the city. Um, and I think that's a, that's something we need to do, and, uh, we're invested in doing. More, most importantly, I think we need a more diverse staff, teaching staff, um, and that, and I, that's more important to me than where people live. I think, uh, I got a question tonight at Morgan, from a parent, when we were talking about what do you wanna see in new schools, obviously, the focus was on facilities, the first thing he said was, I want more bilingual teachers, um, and I want a more diversified staff. And that's not to say that we have very talented teachers of all backgrounds, but certainly, we, right now, thirteen percent of our staff is, uh, teachers of color, and eighty percent of our students are, um, minority students. But there's, there's obviously an imbalance there, as a system, that, uh, that we need to work on moving forward. I, I, I think that's a larger issue for us as a system, um, and I'm willing, I don't, I don't care as much as where they live, except that I want people committed to this community, and I want, I think we need a staff that reflects, uh, the population that we serve. Um, I, I, I don't think anybody would disagree with that, and we have work to do. I don't think we've, we've done enough to recruit, um, and diversify our staff.
In the past, um, the, the Feds HUD did programs with, um, I'm trying to forget, remember what the name of it was, but it was basically, it was for cops and teachers, um, and even, uh, police, or fire, to live in the city that they're, that they're working in.
Yep.
And they were given first choices on, um, foreclosed properties, HUD homes that they had.
Yep.
Uh, there were some incentives even for them to, uh, get down payment assistance, five thousand dollars back, I'm gonna say ten, twelve years ago it was, Springfield was doing it, too. Um, I think you're right on the CDVG side to give, um, possible incentives for, uh, teachers or police and fire to live in the city. Um, you know, so, they used to say, how do you get a cop to move out of Hoyoke? You can make him a, you give him a promotion, and they, and they leave, a lot of them, but it was incentive to bring the cops into the community and live in the community that they're serving, uh, which was a great, and same thing with the teacher aspect, too. So perhaps that's something we can look at with the CDVG monies, uh, for down payment assistance, um, for them to, uh, to come in. But I do believe, what you're saying, are, are, you know, we, I'd like to see, too, the opposite. How many of, how many teachers that live in Hoyoke don't teach in Hoyoke? That would be a, a good stat, if there's possibility of finding it, you probably have to get that through the state. How many actual teachers?
I don't know, I don't know how we get there, but I know, I know, there are a lot of teachers that live in Holyoke that don't teach in Holyoke.
Well, I mean, they gotta be licensed, right? Oh, I know. I, I know, I know, but I remember that's a number you can get from the state.
Yeah.
You have to be licensed, right, state? So they would know how many actual teachers there are in Hoyoke, so, you know.
Right.
That'd be, that'd be interesting, uh, statistic.
True, thank you, and again, um, I agree wholeheartedly with all the conversations, and, you know, I want, again, with, you know, Doctor's Wright's statement with regards to the city of Holyoke, yes, it is important right now, because we're, we're a community on the brink of financial, I could just call it like, you know, on the brink of financial, like, going over the cliff, basically. We're coming closer and closer, and yes, we're making improvements, like you're saying, but if we wanna truly make the changes in the school district, I'm not sure how much money that's gonna be. But if we can increase the number of property taxpayers here in the city of Holyoke, or renters, that helps then the landlord, who's then gonna fill the building up, that will make a significant change. And what I am doing is with this data now, I'm looking into the percentages of other communities where they have a high teaching population that's, again, I'm all about studying and learning. I would love for this body, because who says we're limited to these chairs? Let's go to those communities and find out what they're doing to attract those teachers, from a city standpoint and the school committee side. That's the purpose of this committee, is to explore those options, because for me, if we're able to increase the percent of teachers that are living and staying here, that then helps our tax, property taxes, commercial taxes, business taxes, then we can invest more into the school system. So for me, um, those are the larger conversations and contextual points, but...
And we, we certainly will, we'll, we, we wanna support, we've already begun those conversations around how do we incentivize teachers to live in Holyoke? I think that's, yeah, I think that's a win, and I think if there's a way to give them some sort of a, a break, um, especially, uh, new people coming in, buying their first home, or, uh, first job out of college. Uh, one of the partnerships that the school committee will hear more about is, we're part, gonna partner to the summer with an organization called Generation Teach, and the idea is that we're recruiting young people, uh, who are in college now, to work in our summer school programs. Um, and we wanna prioritize Holyoke, um, uh, students who are in college to come back and work here, and they get a training program, and it gives us a chance to watch them teach, and hopefully recruit them, uh, when they're ju, they're, they'd be rising seniors, a lot of them, um, or ri, you know, rising juniors. Um, in some cases, they would even hire students who have just graduated from high school to work in the summer programs, um, with the idea of coming back here and teaching, and it gives us as a district a chance to watch how they interact and, and hire them. But with an emphasis on recruiting young people who are from the area, um, who have diverse backgrounds, I'd love to, I, our priority is Holyoke High, Dean, grads, who are in college now, to come back and work in the summer program and consider teaching. And then that, there's where your pipeline starts, of people coming back to the community that they, uh, once lived. And I, we could, we'll share more, it's called Generation Teach.
Thank you so much. Any other committee members with questions, comments on item number five? Yes?
Yeah, I just want, you just mentioned in regards to diversity.
Yeah.
I know we lost many teachers when the, um, bilingual course was removed out of our systems, and a lot of the challenges that was found back then, um, had to do with the testing that they were, and I know the schools, our district assisted a lot with helping some of these teachers go and prepare themselves for it. Some just, you know, jumped ship, if you wanna call it, they just left because they...
They couldn't.
They couldn't, or they got fed up about the whole dynamic, and then this turned us into a lot of receivership over and over, so, um... Have we ever considered to look at that list and see if any of those may be available, and that can be reconsidered to...
Yep.
Be calling back some of these people, they were very, they were, we have a, we had a great diversity at, at one point.
Yeah.
And we lost a lot of those teachers, um...
It's a great question.
That may be...
I, I would have to look, but that's a good suggestion. The one, um, the other, uh, program I'm proud, proud of is the Mount Holyoke Preparation Program that we have now, which enrolls paraprofessionals, they get their certification, and then, uh, we pay, we subsidize their tuition, um, or, or non, or teachers who are on waivers to get certified. And, and that, many of our paraprofessionals are from the community, Latino, Latina, they just don't have their certification, um, so as long as they have their bachelor's, we will, uh, Mount Holyoke, we have a cohort, every year, we have a cohort of twelve people going through it, um, and they would, they have to then give a commitment. I wanna make sure they have, if we pay, that they're committed to staying in our system, but it's giving an opportunity for the young person, like, I could tell you, in our system now, we have a lot of young people, some of them that used to work for you, Gladys, um, who have bachelors, but they don't have certifications. And this is a way for them to get through, get their certification, and come back and work in the school system. We have to invest in pro, more programs like that, so, Mount Holyoke's been a great partner, and I think we, we're, we're gonna be moving into our third cohort of people, and in two years, they get their certification.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you so much, anything else from any of the other committee members? No? Good? Thank you again so much, Doctor's Wright, I really appreciate it, sorry we ended twenty-six more minutes after what I assumed we would. Um, with that, I would, um, entertain a motion that item number five be complied with.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is all that we have on our official agenda, ladies and gentlemen, with that, I'll entertain one final motion.
Adjourned.
So moved the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We now stand adjourned, thank you. We now stand adjourned, thank you.
It's an opportunity to experience college from a different perspective, from a, you know, a high school point of view, to see for when you graduate, you know, where you won't be scared from a-